Okay, good morning. My name is Sean Strickland. I am chairing the committee, the whole meeting today and in normal circumstances, Chair of the Administration of Finance and Budget Committee. But as everyone knows, the Regional Council is meeting remotely during the pandemic and practicing physical and social distancing. Before we start today's agenda, we were all saddened and quite dismayed by the news of the discovery of 215 children at the residential school, 215 Indigenous children at the residential school in Kamloops. And Chair Redman would like to make a statement on behalf of Regional Council. Chair Redman?
Thank you, Chair Strickland. On behalf of Regional Council in the region of Waterloo, I want to extend heartfelt condolences to the families and the communities of the 215 children found around the residential school in Kamloops. The Takamloops de Secouacouc, First Nation and all Indigenous communities are in our thoughts today. This is a saddening reminder of the legacy of residential schools and an unthinkable, yet all too real history in Canada. I also want to recognize that words are not enough and that our actions must demonstrate our commitment to truth and reconciliation in support of the well-being of all residents in our community. The region is working with Indigenous communities and leaders, including through the Wellbeing Waterloo Region First Nation, Métis and Inuit Advisory and Advisory Circle on Training, Education, and Other Initiatives to advance the calls to action in the Truth and Reconciliation Commission Report. Last year saw the creation of the Anti-Racism Advisory Working Group to address systemic racism in our workplace and our services by providing recommendations, advice, and information to Regional Council through an anti-racism plan. I encourage all residents to read the reports of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. The stories of families and survivors are powerful. As a country, a region, and as individuals, the 94 calls to action are critical for advancing reconciliation. In addition, there can be no reconciliation without truth, and so we must continue to save the evidence and educate current and future generations on the tragedies committed through residential schools. Residents can learn more through the Woodland Cultural Centre. I want to recognize the impact this news may have on the mental health and well-being of residents in our community. As we process this tragic news, support is available for those in need. Waterloo Wellington here 24/7 Addictions, Mental Health, and Crisis Support can be reached by telephone or on their website. The Indian Residential School Survivors Society has a 24-hour crisis line. They have a phone number as well as a website. Kids Help Phone 24/7 Distress Line also has a phone number and a website. These will be posted on our website. As a community, we must grieve these young lives lost and in our mourning, commit to continued action to ensure this dark period of our nation's history is brought to light in our community, understood and recognized by all and never repeated. So together in mourning, I would ask everybody, we are going to observe a silence which will be extended to 2 minutes and 15 seconds. Thank you, colleagues. I'll turn the floor back over to Counselor Strickland.
Thank you, Chairman Redman. Okay, carrying on with the meeting, we'll go to rule call. Ask the clerk, I'm not sure if it's Tim or Stevie who's going to do that. Tim?
Yep, thank you, Chair Strickland. We'll start with Counselor Armstrong.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Urb.
Present.
Counselor Foxton. Counselor Foxton, I can see your... There we go. Counselor Galloway.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Jaworski.
Here.
Counselor Jowett.
Here.
Counselor Kiefer.
Here.
Counselor Lorenz.
I'm here.
Counselor Mann.
Present.
Counselor Nowak.
Present.
Counselor Shont.
Here.
Counselor Strickland.
Here.
Counselor Verbanovic.
Here.
And Chair Redman.
Present.
That's all present.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Any declarations of any interest? Seeing none, okay, we'll proceed to delegations. I believe we have one delegation today, and I just wanted to remind the delegations, and I'm sure this won't be an issue, but procedures dictate that I must say these things, and that is that please keep your microphone muted until you're called upon to speak. You'll have five minutes to speak, and interrupting counselors, derogatory statements, turning your cameras off or on, or hate speech will not be permitted. I'm sure we won't have any of those issues today. Tova Davidson, welcome. Looking forward to hearing what you have to say this morning.
Thank you so much for having me, and I promise, no, that will not be an issue. I'm just going to get my screen share here. Tell me when you can see my slides. Are we good?
Yeah, we can see it, yep.
Great. So thank you for having me. This is my annual update to council, and it's my honor to be here today. I'm presenting some updates on what happened in Sustainable Waterloo Region and around our region over the past year. 2020 was a year like no other. No one would argue that point. We saw not only the rise of a global pandemic, but the rise of a number of other social issues in a time when climate change was having an awful lot of attention paid to it as well. The landback camp, which started in Victoria Park, raised our awareness of the need for that truth and reconciliation that we just talked about. And the rise of Black Lives Matter also elevated this summer with some really big demonstrations happening across the region. And at Sustainable Waterloo Region, what we learned and what we really have deeply integrated is that the work that we do is not isolated from these issues. There's an intersectionality between all of the social issues we're facing, and we've worked really hard to integrate those into the work that we do. And our team, you see some of them here, are all working towards that integration and to building a better community together. We work throughout all of Waterloo Region, and our focus has been on creating a better region for the whole community. And so it's really great to be here with the Regional Council today. Our impact over the year can be seen in our New Year and Report, and some were delivered to the region office, so you should be getting one soon, but it is in the footer of our website if you'd like to go take a look. And the year-end report shows some of the ways that we've done this integration and the impact this community has had over the past year. Climate Action Waterloo Region is making the rounds of council right now. We were at Waterloo last night, at Willwich tonight, and we'll be here with the region on the 22nd of June. And we have created a strategy and plan which integrates justice and a just transition, equity, prosperity. Really excited to bring more to this council on the 22nd. Charge WR is our entirely volunteer-run program, and you'll see that the rise of electric vehicles in the region continues. I was asked last night if we could get a report that shows how many electric vehicles compared to other vehicles, and it's a good point. We'll take a look for that. But we are working also with Waterloo Region Community Energy on a strategy for how do we continue to grow not only the vehicles in the region, but the number of charging stations as well, so that we are ready for what the transportation system requires in the future. The Evolve Green Space, of course, changed dramatically, like many workplaces, because we no longer are in space to allow for physical distancing and the safety of all people. But the work we've done in this group actually is to do the first steps towards creating a community sustainability lab where we will work in partnership with all members of the community to do some ideation, to find new solutions for the challenges that we face as a community towards a low-carbon future. We also work in that space with Varis, a research institute at Laurier, towards development and implementation of a culture of sustainability in the building. And hats off to the Cora Group, because in the Evolve One building, they are actually now publicly reporting, and this is for the first time in these slides, that their building, the Evolve One building, actually does generate more energy than it needs. We all work from home. This is my little baby, one of my babies. And work has changed, and in our member-based programs, we're seeing that work change, including Always, which is a membership program, which you know, we run in partnership with you at the region. And we found that members and employees are really happy actually working from home. So one of the things we're wondering, how do we maintain this shift? We actually hit a 50% mode split shift during COVID, no surprise to people. But that means that we actually can do this. So the exploration now into how do we maintain some of these changes is a big focus for us. In the Regional Sustainability Initiative, the number of tonnes committed went from about 65,000 to 78,000, and actual reductions were 81,000 tonnes this past year. We're at about 18,000 cars off the road, the biggest number we've had. But even more, we've integrated the global goals from the UN, the SDGs, into our program. So we now support organizations, not just in their environmental reporting, but also in their reporting for all of the work that they do towards creating a sustainable future, because the 17th goal is that they're all related. And 97% of members have told us that they intend to continue their sustainability work post-COVID. Thanks so much for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
Well, thanks very much, Tova. There are at least one question. And once we get the presentation down, I'll be able to see the full screen better. Okay, so we have a couple of questions. Counselor Lorenz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Tova, for the great presentation. I think one of the positive things about COVID is that we're able to do these Zoom meetings, and anybody in the world can kind of get onto our YouTube page and have a better understanding of what we do as opposed to coming into the council chambers. I guess the question I have for you is, I'm wondering if you could just briefly explain your funding envelope. Who funds you? Where do you get your funds from for all the good work that you do?
Thanks for that question, Counselor Lorenz. Sustainable Waterloo Region is a social enterprise, not-for-profit. We run like a business, so our programs primarily fund us. The Regional Sustainability Initiative is a membership-based program, like joining a Chamber of Commerce, for example, and so that's how we pay for that program. Travel Wise is a fee-for-service contract with you at the region of Waterloo, so we receive funds for that program to be able to run it. Climate Action is also a fee-for-service in partnership with REAP Green Solutions. So that funding comes through the municipalities from the region through SWR into REAP. Evolve is done through research funding, so to figure out that culture of sustainability work. So that's how the work at Evolve is funded. And we have funding that comes for any sort of transformational work that we're doing. So the region and the city have come behind some of the Evolve work as well. But we are a social enterprise, not-for-profit. We don't have core government funding, and we don't rely on sponsorship very heavily, a little bit to help our events be a little bit better. But that's primarily where it comes from.
Perfect. So we didn't rehearse this. That was a wonderful answer, and I really appreciate you having that right at the tip of your tongue. So thank you very much, and have a great day.
My pleasure, you too.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Lorenz. Counselor Galloway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Tova, for coming in and giving us a great annual report. One question first, and that was on the number of vehicles that I think you said have been taken off the road. Or where does that number... How do you derive that number?
So there is a calculator with the standard amount of emissions that come from a single occupancy vehicle over the course of a year. And so we know if we've reduced 81,000 vehicles, that's the equivalent of 18,000 cars off the road.
Okay, and equivalent, okay, all right. So we actually haven't reduced 18,000 cars?
No.
I was hoping. Anyways, that's great. But also, thanks for the great work that Sustainable Waterloo Region does. We're certainly glad to be able to be partners in Travel Wise and Climate Action WR and now Transform WR, which, as you said, you'll be coming back to council, to Regional Council later in the month, starting yesterday with the city of Waterloo. And congratulations on a great awards program the other evening. It was very well done and succinct and timely. So another good awards program and a lot of really good recognition to various local companies, particularly in their efforts to reduce their emissions and be more sustainable. So thanks again.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Galloway. Counselor Jaworski.
Thank you, and I'm always pleased to follow cyclist Galloway on these meetings. And thank you, Tova, for participating yesterday as well as chairing the meeting. I didn't have a chance to ask the one question I had written down, which was about EV rebates. I know this is not your area, but I just wondered, are you aware of EV car rebate advocacy being done to the provincial government? Because that does seem to be a gap, that the... You know a lot about different electric vehicles and the price differential. And I feel that it really did make a difference. I just wonder if you know any status or advocacy on that. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Counselor Jaworski. Yes, there is advocacy that's done. Plug and Drive specifically does work in that area. They're a provincial organization, and we do have some great advocates here in Waterloo Region who are also working on that. One of the things we did see, if you looked, if I could show you that graph again, there was a year where we had a three-times jump, and that was the year the $14,000 subsidy from the Ontario government was in place and that we were able to see a really big adoption rate. There is still $5,000 from the federal government, and they changed their program, says that it's only for vehicles under a certain threshold. The one bright spot, I would say, though, is that I have heard from the industry that the price differential from electric to combustion engine vehicles will actually be reduced to nearly nothing within about the next five years. So I'm really hoping that's the case, because I've got a 11-year-old car, and I'm holding tight to be able to do electric.
Excellent news, Tova. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Counselor Clark, then Counselor Shont.
Thanks, Chair. Just a comment. I did have my hand up earlier, but I see that it disappeared. So just not a complaint, just for people to be aware of that possibility. More along the lines of everybody else's questions, I'm really, I've been warned not to say that a bright spot of COVID has been the reduction of vehicles, but we really did see a substantial savings in greenhouse gas emissions for that reason. I'm wondering whether you have any sort of strategy or plan to do outreach to businesses to see what can be maintained? I know that there's a strong business case, so most businesses are probably noticing that their mileage charges are down and their electricity costs and things. But is this something that you're going to be addressing directly?
Thank you for that question, Counselor Clark. Yes, we actually saw in Canada, there was about a 9% decrease in greenhouse gases in Canada due to COVID. The mode split certainly changed in transportation. And if you wanted to say there's a bright spot from COVID, the thing I like to say is that we see that change is possible, and we really can do it. So for me, that is the hope that comes out of this. In terms of the strategy, definitely. So we, not only through the Travel Wise program, focusing right now through essential workers to try to support them, to make sure that they have safe, sustainable ways to get to work, but also through Regional Sustainability Initiative to be speaking to our membership there and to other organizations to talk to them about fleet conversions, different ways of working. You know, if we can do Regional Council virtually, maybe there's a way that businesses can reduce the amount of travel that they need to do on a regular basis, so that there are fewer cars on the road. So definitely looking at that and all of the other ways that this impacts how business operates.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Shont.
Thank you. Thanks, Tova, for the presentation. I look forward to seeing you again tonight. My question is about infrastructure for electric vehicles. And you know, I think about producing electric vehicles and getting lots of electrical vehicles on the road, but there's a whole infrastructure that needs to be in place for that. Is there a role for local governments to play in that?
Thanks for that, Counselor Shont. Yes, we actually found out in our year-end report, and I can't wait for them to get into your hands, that there are 200 publicly available electric vehicle charging stations in Waterloo Region. So there are already lots. And I think that the municipalities certainly have a role to play. And it may be, and that's part of the strategy that we're working on with Waterloo Region Community Energy. And I think for me, the vision is not just what stations can the municipalities put in place, because certainly there's a role there, but also what kind of incentives and supports can be put in place so that organizations, as well as residential spaces, have the infrastructure to have charging infrastructure in place. So a good example is condominium buildings, or oftentimes, old buildings have no way to put charging into their buildings now. So all future buildings would have to be built with that in place. Any parking infrastructure that's redeveloped to allow for conduit to be laid, so that it is easy to install charging in the future, those kinds of things, that enabling role is, I think, equally as important as installation as well. So it's a two sides of the coin.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Shont. Thank you very much, Tova. No further questions. You do very important work. Keep it going. Good job.
Thank you. It's my pleasure, and it's an honor to do the work. Have a beautiful day, everyone.
You too. Thanks. Okay, Consent agenda. Any requests to remove any items from the consent agenda? Counselor Urb. You're on mute, Jim.
I'm sorry, nothing to be removed. I'm just wondering if I could make a comment on the Kissing Bridge report when it would be appropriate.
It's on the consent agenda. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. And I simply wanted to make a comment on that. And you know, the more this trail is used, and the more I use it, I realize what a gem we have here. It's 130 kilometers long, and 25% of it is in the region of Waterloo. And as the report notes, there's two missing bridges over the Grand and the Conestoga rivers in the region. That continued to be significant gaps in the trail, which require on-road detours to bypass these gaps. So the region pursued funding through a federal infrastructure program in 2020, but it was unsuccessful. And I know the staff is exploring options with the steering committee from G2G and Kissing Bridge to see if there's some other initiatives available for funding. And I've connected numerous times with Mr. Hoving and Ms. Hagerman about on behalf of the volunteers from the Kissing Bridge and G2G to hope that we can continue this support to secure some funding. And I'm not sure if either one of them are on the meeting this morning, if they could respond to the possibilities of what might happen with these two bridges in the region that require significant funding.
Sure, thanks, Jim. I see Kate's camera came on. So Kate, are you prepared to give a response to Jim?
Yes, through your chair. As the report says, we are continuing discussions. We don't have any immediate plans, but we're working together with staff in Transportation and Environmental Services and with our trails folks. And we are planning to come back to council with further information over the next couple of months. We don't have anything to share at this time, but it is a puzzle we're trying to solve, and we'd like to move forward on.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Urb.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. That would be great to see something coming back and to try, as you say, solve the puzzle.
Okay, great. Counselor Shont, I saw your head, your hand up, and then it's down, or...
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on Counselor Urb's comments about the bridges and the Kissing Bridge Trail being part of the Guelph to Godrich Trail and the importance of that. So I think that was covered well. Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. And I would agree with Counselor Urb. This is really quite a gem. Actually, I had a neighbor was telling me the other day that they cycled from Wallenstein to Godrich. And they had some fun along the way, and they got up to the beach there and had a great time. So for those who are inclined, that's quite a nice trip through rolling countryside. All right, go ahead.
I just think we could really get Mr. Galloway's tires worn down a little bit more by taking him on this trail to Godrich someday.
I think it's a lot easier on an e-bike. These guys were pedaling all the way. All right, all right. So can I have a mover and seater for the consent agenda then, please? Counselor Foxton, Counselor Armstrong, all was in favor? Any opposed? That's carried. I guess we got to remember, we're kind of waving to move in second, and then we got to use our checkmarks to vote in favor. So that was carried unanimously. Thank you. So we'll move on to Dr. Wong for our COVID update. Dr. Wong, welcome.
Morning, everyone. Thank you. I'll ask Kathy Prash if she could project my slides. And if she could go to the first slide, which is our... Sorry, the second slide, which is our... Thank you. So we are seeing improvements, and our indicators are moving in the right direction. As of yesterday, our case rate sits at approximately 47 cases per 100,000 per week, which is in line with the provincial average now. Outbreaks and hospitalizations are also decreasing. We are seeing improvements in Waterloo Region and across Ontario that would support a stepwise reopening in the coming weeks. Next slide, please. We are also seeing improvements in our indicators for the behind-the-scenes, for the unseen work when compared to the peak of the third wave. For the reporting period of May 17 to 30, we managed close to 1,400 contacts down from 2,000... Close to 2,200 contacts during the peak of the third wave. We monitored 98 workplaces, down from 155 workplaces. We monitored 15 groups or cohorts for school, childcare, and post-secondary, down from 26 colleges. We investigated 71 long-term care, retirement, home, and other congregate settings, down from 82. Our situation is improving, and with continued commitment to public health measures and ongoing progress on the vaccination rollout, we can look forward to a cautious approach to reopening. Other updates. As of yesterday, we have reported nine cases of the B1617 variant, the variant first seen in India. Some of these cases are related to travel, while the others are related to household contact. Variants of concern are the predominant strains in both Waterloo Region and across Ontario. And once a new variant is detected, we anticipate more cases will continue to be identified. As with other variants, we won't be able to continue to report on each individual case going forward, but we'll continue to provide updates on any... but will continue to provide updates on any relevant trends. The key uh message here is that the fewer cases we have overall, the better we'll be able to control new variants as they emerge. And finally, we are no, we were notified on Friday, May twenty-eighth, of Waterloo region residents linked to a large outbreak and high-risk exposure related to the Mary River Mine in Nunavut. A large number of high-risk contacts have been identified across almost all health units in Ontario. In Waterloo region, we have been notified of two cases and seven high-risk contacts at this time. In closing, continued commitment to public health measures, especially limiting close contact to only your household members or one other household exclusively if you live alone, continues to be very important, even as things such stay-at-home order are lifted. If you are visiting with someone from another household, gather outdoors only. Do not exceed more than five people. Practice physical distancing and wear a face covering. With combined efforts of public health measures and increasing vaccination rates, we will slow the spread of COVID nineteen and can look forward to a gradual reopening in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wong. We have a couple of questions. Uh, Councilor Venevich.
Thanks um very much. Uh I I think Councilor Shontz was actually ahead of me, but um up to you, Mr. Chair.
Uh I I'm sorry, the way it's just coming in on the screen, I had you first, uh Sean's second and Clark third. I don't know, there's seems to be a glitch in there, but
Okay.
Are you okay? Okay. Sorry about that. Thanks. Go ahead, Barry.
Yeah, just uh thank you very much, uh Dr. Wong. And are we going to be hearing from Deputy Hilton as well? Because I also have some some questions around vaccines, so I want to hold off on those if.
Uh and not today, although uh Bruce is is here as usual and and myself.
Okay, just uh first of all, thanks uh for the update. On the um reopening, um are we getting, are you hearing any further clarity around? Um you know, what things may look like. I mean, there's talk of the fourteenth, there's talk of something sooner. Um you know, and what I'm hearing from the business community, it's very difficult for them to plan and to be able to uh understand. Should they order more food? Shouldn't they? Uh you know, many of the restaurants have lost their staff, need to rehire, but don't want to hire before um they know that there's going to be a sustainable reopening. Um and and so these are some of the concerns that we're hearing. Um do we have any any further clarity on that?
Um, no, but what we do know is that the government intends to give an update before June the second. So I assume it will be today. Um what we have heard before is even if the stay-at-home order is lifted, the um emergency break will still stay in effect. So really, the only change is that individuals are no longer ordered to stay at home except for essential reasons. Um the other restrictions that are currently in place for businesses and organizations would remain the same. That's the latest understanding I have. But uh we we should hear very shortly from from the province.
Sure, and 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 certainly, you know, I'm I'm hearing from a lot of folks that um, you know, there's been a lot of things that have reopened and um you know, some of the some of the logic that has applied in the past doesn't seem to be flowing through right now. So things like restaurant patios, um you know, which are outdoors and and limit uh folks to two or four people in their own household. Um seeing some of that uh, you know, opening up sooner, um you know, is something that I think we we should be advocating for with the uh with the province. Um one of the um on the issue of um uh vacs vaccinations and I know several of us have been inquiring about this and it's the the issue of the um the over eighty uh population um and their second vaccines. And I know there's a uh you know, a lo- a lot of confusion that's been created uh you know, by the province and and the way they announced it. Um w- we've now put in a place where people can uh can apply, but there's anxiety around applying because they potentially lose their spot um in in terms of the the list that we currently have. Is there not a way for us to change our messaging and in fact not remove people from their current appointment until we actually book their new earlier appointment and and change the messaging accordingly? Um because it seems like it's a manual process we've created. Um and and therefore, that should be, I would think the 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 logic and and the understanding in terms of how the system works. Wondering if someone can help us or clarify that.
Dr. Wong?
Um, yeah, this is uh the the process that we currently have in place. But um uh we can um certainly take that back. Um one of the um um one of the realities of our current rollout is that um there are o- other areas um as as we know that have been uh given more vaccine in recent weeks. And so they are much further ahead in terms of uh being able to cover first doses uh for those that have been waiting for first doses. And um and and now they're much more ready to move up second doses. Um for for uh the other areas which had not been prioritized as part of the uh the hotspot strategy, uh we are uh needing to balance um uh first doses and second doses. But I can certainly um appreciate what you're asking, Councilor uh Venevich. And uh um it it's something that we will uh we will take back.
Okay, thank you.
Right, I uh just further to that, I raised this question at the Board of Health meeting last week. And I I think part of it is that when you register for your second dose, that's going to be earlier than what you previously scheduled for. You have to give that uh the that previous appointment up so that someone who hasn't had their first dose is able to go in and get that appointment. And so they need to have that uh buffer in the system. But I think what needs to happen is, because I've experienced this personally, is that when you press send to get an earlier scheduled appointment, the message comes on and says, you know, it's quite blatant, like you are cancelling your previously scheduled appointment. So you're giving something up, a bird in hand, for an unknown appointment date. And so that's kind of shocking. So I think that the messaging just seems to be a little bit more softened and communicated clearly that you just need to trust the system and and that you will get a uh notification for your new scheduled appointment within two to three weeks or four weeks, wherever the window is. Because that personally happened to me. I've experienced that. So I was left hanging without an appointment, having given up a certain appointment and was worried about it, but then the system came through. So I think there's something we can do just to soften the messaging when you register for your second dose so people uh aren't concerned about not having any appointments scheduled, uh Dr. Wong.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, certainly. We will take that back uh to the team.
Okay, great. Uh, Councilor.
Thank you. Um my question is about the variants of concern. And uh, Dr. Wong, you talked about um the the variant that was identified in India. I think they're calling that Delta now.
Yes, yes, I um, that's correct.
Um and you talked about it being confined to um to family groups and and travel. Is there, uh do we have any indication of community spread of that or is it all fairly contained?
Yeah, that's an excellent question, Councilor Shontz. Um currently, the Ontario lab system is not systematically monitoring for this variant, uh which you're you're correct is, I I I believe as of yesterday called the Delta variant um by the WHO. Uh and so it is not possible to say, but I would say based on what we've seen in other jurisdictions, um what we can expect um is that this variant will, um you know, there there it will grow in 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 i- i- in size. Um and um even though all variants start off as isolated cases um that often, you know, have known sources of acquisition, eventually, you know, there will be uh cases that don't have unknown sources of acquisition and which is a signal of community spread. And so I think the I think the key thing to to take away is there really isn't um it really isn't possible to prevent that from happening once variants start to appear in an area. And what is important to do uh is to keep the transmission in the community as low as possible. Of course, every single case that we're aware of, we need to do strict case and contact management. And our approach in Waterloo region is we treat every case as a variant. So it, you know, doesn't matter whether it's detected later or not. Um so so there's obviously, at the individual level, strict case and contact management. But in addition, if everyone practices good public health measures and gets vaccinated when it's their turn, then we have the best chance of slowing the spread of COVID nineteen. And that's the best way to control the growth of the variants. Um because even though we know there's this Delta variant now that's appeared in Ontario um and um, you know, is starting to grow, it doesn't mean that that variant will necessarily um grow the same way as B one one seven. That's the uh the variant first identified in the UK now called the Alpha variant. Um you know, we do have two other variants, for example, that haven't grown that much yet um in 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 Ontario. So so we could still control it. But the 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 key to to control at this point in time in Ontario and in Waterloo region is to keep the community rates low. I'll just say one thing, with 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 variants, uh sorry, with viruses, we're we're going to get more variants. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when. So uh this is the natural um course with viruses, they continually create variants. So the less that we have spread, the less that this virus um um replicates. Um then um the 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 greater chance we have to control it. So um it is, every time we have a variant, it is concerning. Uh it you know, it we we have to be very cautious, we have to monitor carefully. Um but it's the same measures that we have to employ. And and the key thing to be aware of is even though our rates are decreasing and things are heading in the right direction, that is really why we have to keep up with those public health measures and move forward with immunization. And importantly, why we need to do this in a gradual stepwise approach uh in terms of reopening. Uh it's because of these factors such as um new variants that can be more transmissible. Thank you.
Thank thank you, Dr. Wong. Uh Mr. Chair, just a a note I have at ten o'clock meeting. I'm going to pop out for a bit and I'll be back.
Sure. Okay, great. Thanks, Councilor Shontz. I know there's several councillors in uh in that same boat today. So we'll just do the best we can. Adaptability is what our mantra is these days during the pandemic. Uh, Councilor Clark.
Thanks, Chair. Along the same lines of the discussion of variants, one of the um things that I'm 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 hearing and seeing has to do with uh vaccine hesitancy and a lack of confidence that the vaccines that we're currently administering can act, will actually be effective with all of the different variants. And I know that um research is is developing day to day on this and variants change and and so on. But I think that people's experience with influenza vaccines has showed them that sometimes they get the vaccine and it's bang on and protects them. And sometimes they get the vaccine and they still get the flu because the vaccine that we've developed is actually for a different flu. And we've talked about Alpha and we've talked about Delta and I'm assuming there's a Bet and a Gamma in there and probably a whole bunch of other Greek letters. Um so what do we know at this point about about um the effectiveness of the vaccine to deal with the variants that we that we see now?
Oh, thanks. Thanks for the question, Councilor Clark. So uh you're correct that um, you know, there are studies going on as we speak and results are coming in very frequently, daily even about um whether or not um the vaccines we currently have are effective or not against this strain or that strain. If we take the evidence overall, um what we see is that even if some studies are showing that um, you know, the vaccines may not be um as effective as maybe uh um like against new variants as they were against the previous variants. The 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 overall conclusion is that vaccines still have an effect um on the variants. And the more people are immunized, the more a community is immunized, um the more the the growth of variants will slow. Um and at at this point in time, we also have to keep up the public health measures. So it would no vaccine equals no protection at all against the variants. Uh but vaccine equals greater protection against the variant variants, even if it's not a hundred percent. And it's uh there is still some efficacy. And um there's usually better efficacy if um people have had their complete series, which is why we all recommend that people complete their series. And we do know right now, many people very much want to complete their uh their series. So it's just a supply issue we have at this time. Um but it doesn't really um change what we need to continue to do. Uh because it 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 not only um provides uh some uh efficacy against variants and oftentimes very good efficacy against variants, but it also helps control the spread of any new variants that 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 come around. Um because um once you have a s- a slower rate of growth, um there's a there's less chance for new variants to appear. So um it's still strongly recommended uh to 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 get vaccinated. It is your best protection uh in addition to public health measures uh against all the new variants that are known to date.
But it's interesting that the, as as I understand it, the Centre for Disease Control has said uh to people in the States, if you've had both of your shots, you can take off your masks. I think that's that's an interesting message.
Yes, um they do have higher rates of the population who've had a second dose than we do um in in Canada. But can, but the approach that we've taken in Ontario um is a cautious, is a more cautious one. Uh and I I fully support that because there are these unknowns um with uh you know, these new variants that are appearing and the fact that um we know um you know, we are still not quite, well, there's still some weeks to go before we reach um those uh levels of immunization. Uh you know, that better protect the community overall. And so, yeah, the United States, uh they they have they have greater rates of um uh of people who have been fully immunized, but they also are taking an approach um that isn't as cautious as uh uh as ours.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Clark. I have Councilor Lorenz, then Foxton.
Uh, thank you, uh Mr. Chair, and uh thank you, Dr. Wong, for getting us through the thick and thin all the way along the many months. I really appreciate it and uh I know the community that we all represent does as well. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think I can make a couple of comments about process if that's possible. Chair Striper?
Sure.
Yeah, is that okay?
I think.
Okay, well, I'm going to take a stab at it anyway. Um thi- this whole thing we've talked about today and we've talked about for months and months and months is we're trying to interpret what the federal government's doing, what the province is doing, how um it What the federal government's doing, what the province is doing, how um, it trickles down to us where we ended up implementing it. And um, I'm wondering if maybe we should be asking the uh, local MPs. And the local MPPs. Where they have been through all of this. I, I haven't heard anybody comment on anything. Maybe councillor Harris can help me out. How many uh, local MPPs do we have in, in the region? Is it four or five?
Oh, jeez.
I, I've met, I, I've met, I think. Each of them maybe once over the last three years. I, I don't know where they are. But, you know, we're, we're asking our staff to interpret provincial policy. We're asking our staff to, in fact, councillor or uh, Dr. Wong just mentioned, you know, supply's been a bit of an issue. Yeah. So who, who, who exactly is, is responsible for the supply? And where are they? Why aren't they explaining what's going on? Why, wh- why do we have to hear from the premier and then we all try to interpret what they're saying? No. None of the MPPs have come out and said, well, yeah, this is what this means or this is what that means. I'm sure they still have their staff and. Their offices that are getting paid probably three or four times what we make. And yet we're down here in the weeds trying to um, decipher all of this stuff, trying to figure it out. Um, we get, I mean, we're right in the middle of a, a support fifty by thirty and trans- and transform Waterloo Region Climate Action Strategy. Being bombarded with uh, emails from them. It, it seems to me that if everybody would try to stay in their lanes and do their jobs and try to explain as elected officials. What their responsibilities are, what the province, wh- what, what the province is doing and what the federal government is doing. Um, it would make our lives a lot easier because we seem to try to answer all the hard questions and based on trickle down information. And the only ones that really can, can do that. Are the professionals like Dr. Wong who are supposed to be doing their, their, their jobs. Um, making sure that needles are going in people's arms. So. I, I, I don't understand the process and I would hope that um. Members of council would, would support the opportunity to hear from them and figure out how they fit into uh. All of the things that have been happening in the last eighteen months. Because. I, all I hear is crickets from MPs and MPPs. When you don't hear it, I guess that's because you don't hear. But I find that very frustrating. I find that people that are looking for answers have to come to us. To tell them, well, our, our best guess is, or. We're, you know, we're set up to do this, but we don't have the vaccines and we're not sure who's getting it. We shouldn't be doing that. Somebody else should be doing that. Doing their job just like we are. And I know it may sound a little melodramatic, Mister Chair, but. I, I, I think we need to clear the air on this stuff and we need to hold some of these other people accountable for what. What they should be doing and what they're obviously not. Unless somebody's been in contact with MPPs every, every week. It certainly hasn't been me. But um. Yeah, I, I, I think we need to clarify that and I think if we're all gonna fight this together, we should all be in it together, not just regional councillors, um. You know, doing the bidding of, of the, the province of Ontario the best that we can. That was it.
Well, councillor, okay, thanks councillor Lorenz. I, I don't think it's quite fair for Dr. Wong to. To respond to that, but I, I would say that.
Not meant for Dr. Wong. It was meant for us to think about and possibly uh, take some action on. Has nothing to do.
Oh.
Sorry.
Okay, well, I, with that, I wanted to seek that clarification because, you know, we are getting an updated report from Dr. Wong. So I wasn't sure if you were addressing that to Dr. Wong or who you were addressing that to.
I did mention that I wanted to talk about the process a little.
Yeah, I wanna talk about the process, but the process related to vaccination rollout and pandemic control and. And all I would say is that we are the Board of Health. And that this is uh, been a, you know, a new. Uh, public health crisis for the past eighteen months and people are learning as they go along. And I think many people share your frustration, not only on council, but. Across the community as well. And messaging has been a real problem. But, but I, I would say councillor Lorenz that. That I, I don't think that we would want to have MPPs and MPs right across the country and in the different provinces weighing in. On these interpretation matters. I think the, the chain of communication from the province. Uh, through to our, you know, through their science advisory table, through to the medical officers of health, it's not been perfect. But I think that that's the best way to go in terms of trying to tighten the message. And even with that tight kind of protocol for communication. We've obviously had some challenges. So. Uh, I share your frustration, but I would hazard to suggest that we get more politicians involved. Let's leave it more the science table and the medical officers of health. Uh, Chair Redman, I saw that you put your hand up. Do you want to respond to, to councillor Lorenz's comment?
Thank you, Chair Strickland. If I, if I could, and councillor Lorenz, we all share your frustration. And actually. There's probably nobody on this call that has more frustration than Dr. Wong. And she has represented and lobbied for us uh, where we need to be lobbied for, which is at the science table. And I'd have to tell you that we have been meticulous in following the spirit of every directive and usually the letter of the directive. Excuse me, but it has stood us in good stead as far as um, having a profile of credibility that I would tell you amongst um. The MOHs um, across the province and at the science table. Just for your information, um. I meet with the chairs of boards of health. Um, Joe Cressy called, started calling those meetings. Um, so all the chairs of boards of health. Across the province every three or four weeks. Um, and. So many boards of health are hearing. The, the news by um, press release, which is how we often hear it too. So that's not any different. But I do meet regularly with the MPPs and the MPs and they do know. That um, when we're sh- short and when I went to the premier in the past with specific asks, um, they have been responded to. And again, you have to make sure you've done your homework. And at one point, we were fourth lowest. Um, in the province of getting vaccine and I, I could go and make a cogent case. So. Just um, just so you know, I, I don't know that we always sort of report back, but all of those things happen on an ongoing basis.
Okay, councillor Lorenz.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, it was more of um, I, I think just. I wasn't aware that Chair Redman was doing that, but. You know, when, in a trickle down theory, it has to trickle to the bottom and it seems like it's coming to us. And the messaging, I think, from our, our local. Elected officials at different levels hasn't been there at all. And I, I think, I find that surprising. When people start asking me questions, I say, well, have you spoken to your MPP? And they say, well, why? You know, you guys are handling all this stuff and we shouldn't, we should all be in it together. So it just was food for thought. And it had, I, I, I'm, I totally agree with, with, I, I think. We're on the right track. It just is very frustrating sometimes because everybody thinks. We can resolve everything and, and some people aren't doing what I believe their jobs. Uh, what they were elected for. So maybe they are, I don't know. I don't read about in the paper. Don't get any uh, press releases from local MPPs or MPs about any of this stuff. And. Maybe I'm out of the loop, but I just thought I would bring it to our attention. We have a great team here, Mr. Lochner, all. Senior staff are doing a great job. Everybody's pulling on the same rope. It gets a little frustrating when we have to say, well, that. You know, there's been supply issues and, and those kinds of things because um. Uh, the way it seems to be going, there shouldn't be there. So anyway, just my comments and uh, I didn't mean to. Step on anybody's toes, but uh, that's what we're here for, I guess, to. To represent our people.
That's fine, councillor Lorenz. You know, this has been a long process. Like when we. Started this back in March of last year, who would have ever guessed that we'd be on June first and still meeting remotely and. Dealing with the pandemic. But the, you know, the, the end is closer than the beginning, I think. So we gotta stay vigilant, but the end is closer than the beginning. All right. Thanks councillor Lorenz. Councillor Foxton.
Uh, thank you, Detective Chair. Just one quick comment to uh, councillor Lorenz is that uh. It depends what your MPP's messages. And I'll just leave that at that. Um, uh. Dr. Wong, you mentioned something about the shortage of vaccine. But I just wanted to clarify for the public because the way you said it, it made it sound like there's a shortage now. We don't have a shortage now. Is that correct? We're running full tilt ahead?
Yeah, a- 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 apologies for, for, for that confusion. So um. Relative to other areas that have received. More vaccine, um, because they were in a much more serious um, state. Um. They are, you know, we've had less vaccine. That's the way that um, um, I should have put it. Now we're back to more of a per capita distribution as opposed to what happened before. But given that that's happened before, um, those areas are ahead in terms of. Coverage of first doses and they have a greater ability to move up second doses. And, and that, and they will likely continue to have. Um, um, they, they will continue to be ahead in that way as we go forward because. Now we're, we've moved back to a per capita um, distribution. So. It, 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 we, and our residents, you know, we, we are getting more vaccine now. Um, and we will be able, you know, um. To uh, get more of our uh, vaccine, our residents vaccinated with the first dose, uh, start to move up second doses. But for. Uh, for health units part of those um, hottest health units and who got uh, you know, um, the, a big bolus of additional vaccine. Um, earlier in um, in May. You know, they, they are always going to be ahead and because they're very populous regions. Um, they, they pull up the provincial average. So that's why our numbers don't look like the provincial numbers. And the likely, and likely the provincial numbers will continue to be ahead of our local numbers because of that reason. But it, it, but we are still doing very well with the vaccine that we've received. And um, you know, for other health units in a, in a similar situation, who have received similar amounts per capita. We're all on the same boat.
Yes, and that's the message I've been telling people is that there is a need to vaccinate an area. Quickly. And so we, we lost vaccine at that time. We did not get the, what we required. So that they could come to a level more reasonable to where we're at. But the end game's gonna be the end game for all of us and we're heading in that direction. And it's like, you know, you get impatient when you're near the end. Yeah, but we're getting there. We just have to remember we're getting there. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Thanks councillor Foxton. I see no further questions, no. Hands raised. So thank you very much, Dr. Wong. Keep up the great work. Okay, um, next item on the agenda is uh, housing provider amalgamation from formation. Then we have the regional nuclear bomb shelter. We have a staff report on that. So Helen and Laurie.
Good morning. I'm just gonna share my screen.
Okay, great. Welcome, Laurie.
Thank you very much. Is everybody able to see that?
Yep.
Okay, so good morning.
Sorry, we could, we can't now. There you go.
Perfect, okay. Good morning and thank you for giving us the opportunity to give a brief presentation on the regionally owned nuclear bunker. Uh, located at three, five, seven, one, King Street East in Kitchener. Pretty is located across from the Freeport Hospital, adjacent to the Freeport Bridge and Schneider Park. So here at the bottom, you can see a, a picture of the bomb shelter and how it's actually built right into the land. The bomb shelter was constructed in, as a joint venture between the County of Waterloo and the Department of National Defense in nineteen sixty-six. Due to nuclear threat from the Cold War. The joint venture tried to find an existing building that would be suitable, but nothing had a fallout factor of five hundred. And what that means is that there was no buildings that had. Um, where the radiation inside the building was one five hundredth of what the radiation is outside of the building. The county chose this property, uh, and they purchased it from the city of Kitchener for one dollar. It was designed to be an operational emergency headquarters that housed forty city officials for thirty days. If there was a nuclear attack. The building was self-equipped with water well, septic system and a generator and diesel storage. The building is constructed with ten inch concrete walls and was built into the ground as a mound type bunker. The bomb shelter was decommissioned in nineteen ninety-two and was used for emergency simulations and as a meeting space for local groups. From two thousand three to two thousand eighteen, it was used by the Kitchener Waterloo Rowing Club mostly for boat storage. In two thousand eighteen, facilities conducted building condition assessments, which included structural inspections and hazardous substance reviews. The structural report identified that the structure was robustly built. However, there are concerns with soil erosion surrounding the bomb shelter, specifically the entrance stairs. Corroded structural steel due to moisture seeping into the building because the waterproof membrane had been removed. And concerns with integrity of the, of the retaining wall. The hazardous substance report identified that the building contained mold, asbestos, silica, lead and mercury. The presence of mold was so big that facilities determined the building was unsafe to enter due to health and safety concerns. A heritage impact assessment was completed in November of twenty twenty. And the assessment identified that the building exceeds the criteria for designation under part four of the Interior Heritage Act. And exceeds the requirements for designation as a regionally significant cultural heritage resource. The assessment also recommended that it should be rehabilitated. The heritage impact assessment was presented to both the Regional Heritage Planning Advisory Committee and the Kitchener Municipal Heritage Advisory Committee. And both recommended that the bill designated and rehabilitated. So now we are putting forth a recommendation to council to proceed with immediate repairs to waterproof, abate, secure and stabilize the structure of the bomb shelter. We are also recommending that further exploration take place to determine potential uses, design options and funding sources for the rehabilitation. I am now going to turn it over to Helen, who's going to give you um, a brief. Presentation on the potential future of the bomb shelter.
Great. Thank you very much, Laurie. So last October, um, we were asked to go away and think of potential uses for the site. And the first step was to go off and, and talk to the heritage advisory committees about the. The asset. And so here we know that it is um, a unique heritage asset. So. There aren't many bunkers like this, particularly in this mound construction. But then when you actually look at the bunker itself and its location, so it's right next to the Grand River, it's right next to some trails, it's in the middle of a park. Built into this uh, structure itself is the concept of sustainability, uh, green technology. How can we? Um, uh, and then also this concept of connectivity. So. If we're looking at this uh, as an asset that we have, which now has been confirmed as a, as a heritage asset. We now also see that it's in this uni- unique location. And if you squint and look closely at all of these uh. Uh, little pieces here on, on the slide, if we go to the next slide, um. We're finding there's actually a unique opportunity here to. Use this site uh, to further our strategic goals. So um, we have this. Like I said, a unique heritage asset. Um, how can we use this site to um, potentially uh, look at um. Community engagement. Could this be a space where we can engage our community in a different way if we create a welcoming space from the ground up? Um, how can we use it to direct waste away from the landfill in undertaking something that's more than adaptive reuse? Um, how can we look at uh, climate action and actually build in green technologies into this site? So uh, like it says in the recommendation to be sent away to um. Consult with the community a bit more about potential uses for the site. So next slide, please. So. The, the baseline here is that this can be used as a collaborative space. We have uh, pictures here of places where bunkers have been adaptively reused in other places. There's one from Albania where it's been used as a. A hamburger joint. There's one from Russia that's turned into a nightclub. So there's certainly potential here in this site to be used in a different way. Again, to showcase uh, low uh, net zero energy design, um, and really use a space to uh, engage and connect with our community. So I think we'll leave it there. Thanks very much.
Okay, uh, thank, thanks Helen and Laurie. So. We have five speakers already and there's a resolution and I fully expect that there will be some. Controversy and, and maybe not unanimity around how we're gonna proceed with this. So. I would suggest that you ask questions of staff for now and then after those questions are done, then we'll deal with the resolution. So. Uh, let's start with councillor Harris.
Yeah, thank you, uh. Councillor Strickland, uh, appreciate staff's uh, time and energy looking into uh, uh, the bunker. I would tell you, uh, admittedly that um. Myself included, as well as many other folks within the region, I think would um, you know. If polled, would, would, wouldn't even realize that we actually had a bunker in the region. Um, we'd need to build a bigger one today if we were to house all the officials that we have here in the region uh, from forty. Uh, nonetheless, um. I did receive uh, lots of correspondence on this particular one and I'm, I'm gonna make a comment, I guess, supposedly first, you know. Um, supposedly there are other bunkers within Canada. I think there's active ones in Carp and Nova Scotia. Uh, most have been. Uh, re- some some haven't ref- refurbished, uh, some have been demolished, uh, a couple of them have been rendered useless. Their entrance was blocked by concrete. Um, or flooded and sealed. Uh, one is in use in Quebec as a barracks, uh, obviously ours is unsafe. I will note that in the report, the city of Kitchener, I I expect perhaps Counselor or Benedict to maybe chime in on this, but. Um, the city council didn't designate this a heritage site, which I think is important to this discussion. Um, you know, I think at this time, regardless of whether we're in a pandemic or not, I heard an outcry from people. Of the sheer cost involved to potentially turn this into a, you know, reusable site down the road. Um, I don't think the region's really in the the nightclub business, and so. I think between four and four and a half million dollars uh to potentially turn this into something is an extreme. You know, uh, perhaps uh not a great use of tax money at this time, especially. Um, understanding that we've got uh demolition costs that need to be incurred regardless. Uh, that expense, although excessive is probably the right one at this point. I will tell you that we've got a lot of other cultural organizations, museums within our own region. Already in existence that are starving for funds right now. I know we've all heard of the the need for those precious dollars and to have. Perhaps something else pop up uh without really a plan. Uh, would be unfair to those folks, uh, and I know we can think of them off the top of our heads, and so. Um, I'll kind of end at that, but I would ask uh and and want to table. You know, an option C uh to demolish uh this um. This bunker, um, and I hope that council will consider.
Yeah, we're not, we're we're not, we're not dealing with the resolution right now, but I'll certainly take that under advisement. Do you have a question? Do you have a question for?
No, no.
A question for staff?
No question of staff, just my comments on the staff report. I thank them for that. Uh, and hopefully when there's an opportunity to come back, uh, you can come back to me, uh, Counselor Strickland, uh, to table that uh third option. Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Clark.
Thanks, Chair. Well, when the time is right, I would like to move the staff recommendation and and I will speak to it at that time. Um, but my questions of staff, I I have two. Um, and one they probably can't answer, but but I'm going to ask it anyway because I think that Counselor Ivanovich isn't with us right now. Um, do you know why the city stopped short of designating they they um? They listed the building on their heritage registry, but they haven't designated it. Do you know why that is? That's my first question. Uh, my second question has to do with mentioned in the report to an online petition. Which surprisingly, I haven't seen, given that I see it seem to receive. Hundreds of online petition emails every day, and I haven't seen that one, which um I'm 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 just curious.
Um, so your first question, which is why the city of Kitchener, I can certainly find that out. I don't know the answer to that one. Um, and the second one, I'm not sure I understand the question is, is there a petition? Yes, last time I checked, it had. A few hundred, and I certainly can get the link to you if you're interested.
Thank you, yeah, I I simply haven't seen it, which, so it surprised me to see the, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Galloway?
Thank you, Mr. Um, the question I have uh to um. To Lori or to Helen is, in regards to the repairs, the uh. Thousand dollars that's being recommended, um. Is that just? Is that just to tide us over for a period of time until we make a a a more permanent decision? And if we've lived with the building in its current condition for this long. Can we not simply not spend that money until we make a decision on the future potential use? I I I'm trying to figure out why we need to spend seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, for some period of time until we decide what potential use for the building.
So right now, the the problem is that the waterproofing membrane was removed. And it is a flat roof, so the water is pooling on top of the roof and seeping into the building. So this is causing the structural steel to erode. Um, and also the mold, so it's increasing the presence of mold, which means we we've actually closed the building, so we can't get in it. So the longer that this goes on, the the more the damage continues. And and that is our concern and why we put forth a recommendation to to water tie it and, you know, increase. Or sorry, improve the the structural stability of it, just so that the integrity of the building doesn't uh falter anymore.
So what is the period of time uh anticipated until we would get the next report? Uh, about the potential reuse of the building? So I'm trying to get a a feel for, okay, the building's been in disrepair for, it's been decommissioned since two thousand and nineteen, eighteen, whatever. Uh, so it's been there for over three years in its current condition, deteriorating, no doubt. Um, I mean, if the decision eventually is to um. To 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 demolish the building, that we can't find a suitable use for the building. Then it just doesn't make sense to me to spend any amount of bill, any amount of money on the building currently. Until we make that, you know, that real determination. Um, so can you, how much time might it take to uh? To come up with what would be the intended, the intended use?
That's a good question. I would imagine so it would be a public consultation process, right? So we build some options out, go out and work with the community. Um, so. I guess anywhere between four to six months to get a proper community consultation, get ideas and feedback from the community. And truly build out some ideas to get a better sense of. Um, the cost of what a rehabilitation would look like depending on what the option is, but if we don't. Sort of stave off the deterioration now, we start to lose that as one of the options that that we would want to actually look into. So the staving off of. Any kind of further damage allows us the option to start thinking about what would we like to do with this building, and there's a multitude of options that we have out there. Or of course, the other route is if we don't want to invest in this building, then we would choose to demolish it. So, but I'm saying four to six months to have a good community engagement process.
And and I guess the next question then Helen is, or I don't know if it's to Bruce or who it's to. Is is the region decided that it has no current use, no 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 corporate use? For the building like. Our operations center on on Maple Grove couldn't use it for. You know, a a boneyard or some kind of uh uh long-term storage. Um, facility, um. Or are we looking for some? New community use for for the building? I mean, the Maple Grove facility is just a a stone's throw away, and I and I'm just wondering if. If 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 operations has even been given a chance to uh. To look at the building to see if it could uh serve a purpose in terms of uh storage of um. All the different kinds of things that they have. I know we have a large yard there, but with the new road that's being currently built. Uh, through our operations property, um, you're going to be able to get to this this location very, very quickly.
Helen, is that is that something that um if this resolution is approved, that staff could look at a little bit further, because I think that. Your contemplation is for community use, not for operations use, correct?
Well, our contemplation is for adaptive reuse, right? So, but at the moment, it's not safe to enter the building because of the level of mold and and and. So even if we wanted to use it as storage or anything, we'd still have to make, get rid of the mold. And somehow waterproof that space so that it can be used in future, otherwise the mold perpetuates and we we can't even go down that route, right? So some kind of adaptive reuse of the building will require kind of waterproofing and rehabilitation. At the base level, and then we can move on to.
Yeah, but potentially if to Counselor Galloway's question though, so that potentially could include an operations uh.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry that I used the example of the nightclub. That was just a an example that bunkers can be adaptively reused. That was not me suggesting we use it as a nightclub.
I don't think most counselors thought that that was what was going to happen there. Counselor Galloway?
Well, uh, so am I hearing that the region corporately has not. Exhausted looking at its own potential uses of this facility such? I mean, I only mentioned operations as one example, but uh. Uh, maybe there's other departments that have uh kind of redundant storage requirements. Yeah, I guess my point is, do we spend the seven hundred thousand, which is not a small amount of money, just to. Do whatever, and then, you know, a year from now or six months from now decide, well, there are no uses for it. We're going to demolish the place. Um, I I I certainly don't want to get caught in that situation. That's my primary concern.
If I may respond, um, the building is, it's quite unique. Uh, when you drive up to it, the only way to enter the building is a staircase. So to actually physically use it, you'd have to create some sort of a, you know, for a storage, some sort of a system to get down to the bottom to use the overhead doors. That have been placed in it. Um, right now, it's just not accessible and. Facilities has looked at it and and has not been able to determine a use for it for um any corporate reasons.
Uh, Bruce?
Lori covered it. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
All right. Okay, um, Counselor Lorenz.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and and thank you for the report. Um. I don't know if we have any interior shots that could have been included or from the past to so show us what. Because obviously you don't walk through those two concrete doors and just stand there, so it goes deep into eh into the ground. But if you look at the appendix B uh on on the site map that we have, the figure, there's really no parking there, is there? I mean, there's very limited parking for for that facility. Is that not correct?
At the moment, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, so what if we if we you're thinking we could create more parking, rip out some of the trees and and create more of a. But there's, it's a great open space right now, but would it, I don't understand the thinking. Would we be paving over a lot of it to have people? Park there? I I just, I know it's very, it's like it's with that curve, it's a very dangerous corner to get it in and out of, but we look, we look at that. If we want to make some kind of different use there?
Right, so these are the things that we have to look into. It is on a transit line, it is on our active cycling trails as well, so these are things that we have to think about. How practical would certain? Solutions be? And that'll be part of the process.
Okay, um, have you um ever put your mind to figuring out how we could um? We could preserve this photographically, uh, display, uh, you know, some something about our heritage that we could put into the Ken Sealing Museum. You know, we have three museums and I mean, the attendance isn't the greatest, but this is part of our history that would um. You know, make part of that kind of program, and if we decide to demolish or do something different, is it possible to? I know you said you can't even get into the building because of mold and stuff, but is it possible for somebody to put together a photo expose? Or or something that would be a permanent display yeah uh at that at our regional museum?
So we actually do have some uh. Some staff and and consultants going in very shortly as part of a properly equipped with all their hazmat uh suits, et cetera. To go in and do some recording of the current space as it is to better understand it, so that we do have. Um, that captured, and that's also going to be part of our doors open celebration in September, so there will be a small vignette about that. It is that beginning point of the interpretation of this really interesting part of our history and the interesting, sorry, um. So that's absolutely, that's something that we're currently undertaking.
So it it's possible, we could, we could have a permanent display as part of all the other permanent ones that we have at uh uh in the museum.
Correct.
Yeah, and what you what do you think that would cost?
I don't know off the top of my head. It really depends how big we would like that to be. But we're, like I said, we're currently having people go in there and do the videotaping right now, so we'll have the raw materials, no matter what we choose to do.
So, yeah, I I would, I think that would be a real viable option, and I'd be interested in seeing, you know, what what that would cost, that display would look like. Um, that that's the only questions I have. I'll participate in the debate later, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lorenz. Counselor Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Thank you, Lori and Helen, for the presentation. It's uh very interesting, and as other counselors have said, this is a very unique building within our region. And um certainly uh from a policing standard, we did utilize it in in the past as well for training purposes. So my question though, um, if we spend seven hundred doll, seven hundred thousand dollars to repair. Or to stabilize and waterproof the building, how long will that last? How long would that stabilize the building for us?
Well, the the seven hundred thousand includes uh you making sure it's structurally sound, including the roof. Um, getting rid of all of the asbestos mold and having that roof on it, it would um, you know. Eliminate the mold and from coming back. So the idea is that. I mean, typically a roof is twenty, twenty-five years. Um, there would have to be ongoing maintenance to keep it. You know, in in the the standards that we would need it to be, but it would buy us um si- significant amount of time.
Thanks, and then uh during that time or or right away, we would start some type of community consultation. To find out what type of use, because we don't have a a use for it right now, so we'd go back out to the community and find out what type of use. They would suggest that we could uh make of the building?
That's correct. That that's the plan, the idea, yes.
And and then just one other question, and it's a bit of a follow-up to what Counselor Renz was talking about, and that is uh. If that building is demolished, would there be an opportunity uh uh the uh? The park and the trailer right there, would there be an opportunity to put up information boards about it at that location as well to identify that? At this location in the past, this facility was here for these reasons, and to have a a pictured board to display. On display rather, so that the public would have an idea of what was actually there prior to uh. The building be or prior to, prior to today.
The the heritage impact assessment does speak to the possibility of demolition as one of the options, and it does identify. Um, you know, creating a footwell of where the 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 bomb shelter was. Commemorative plaques and various different options for if demolition is the uh chosen option.
Thanks, Lori. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mann. Counselor Jowett?
Uh, thanks, Chair Strickland. So, um, Helen and Lori, has anybody approached GRCA about this? We do have adventure. Uh, adventure things al- along the Grand River, and I know that. Spacemaking is, you know, something that uh Minto talks about all the time. We've heard her and tourism has taken a bit of a. Hit during COVID, so maybe this could be something that uh could sort of support restoration of um. Of um tourism in the region. Uh, is that something that's been considered or or? I don't know if GRCA would be interested, uh, but is that something that's worthwhile looking at?
Well, we have reached out to GRCA, uh, but mostly because it's within a floodplain, so just to see what our our limitations are and what we're allowed to do at the site. But we have also briefly reached out to the city of Kitchener Parks just to see how we could tie in. Um, or collaborate together with them because it is adjacent to to Schneider Park. So they they are uh on board to discuss it in the future, and um there's discussions about. Potential boat launch and various different ideas, but only at a very preliminary level at this point.
Okay, so I'll wait for the debate. I do think it's a fairly unique space, and I don't, I I think that hinders its marketability, but uh we'll wait for the debate for that. Thank you very much for the information.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Foxton?
Thank you to the chair. Um, yeah, we have a similar type of, well, not, not like this, but there was a building on on the floodplain in North Dumfries. And GRCA said the only thing we could do is allow a boat launch there. Seven million dollars is an awfully expensive boat launch. I really like the way that Counselor uh Lorenz and Counselor Mann are talking. And and uh. Looking, I I thought near the end of um our package, the addendum did have pictures on the inside, and it did look pretty. Ghastly. So I real, um, yeah, I'd I'd like to hear the discussion. But I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure GRCA would allow, they would allow us just to store some canoes in the building, and that would be it. No people or anything else.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Fox and Counselor Urb.
I thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to come back to the seven hundred thousand dollars, um, sort of a temporary fix. And um Helen, you you said you thought the public um consultation would be. For the next month, be of a reasonable timeframe. And and again, um, like if we didn't do anything with the seven hundred thousand dollars, Lori, what would be the um? What would case scenario i- if we didn't spend the seven hundred thousand dollars and waited for the public um consultation? what would case scenario i- if we didn't spend the seven hundred thousand dollars and waited for the public consultation to end?
It's quite hard to to estimate what the worst case scenario could be, but in the structural report, uh, my biggest concern right now is that some of the soil is eroding um, surrounding the bomb shelter, specifically underneath the entrance stairs. So when you, when you pull in, there's a a door and then you you it walks down to the bunker and uh, the soil is actually starting to erode underneath that. So if that soil continues to erode, there could be collapsed a portion of that uh, that entranceway. Um, that would be the worst case scenario. I I think the other thing is that the water will continue to get in and the structural steel will continue to rust and um, and corrode. Um, but right now the building is fairly robust, right? It's ten inch concrete walls. And the the roof slab itself isn't in terrible conditions, just the water getting through. So it would be, you would see the increased mold and and I guess the increased rust and corrosion on the steel and then worst case risk of uh, um, collapse of a portion of the the bomb shelter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good questions. We had a discussion. So what I'm going to propose is that we get the resolution on the floor. I also know there's a potential amendment. So we got it moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by we have a seconder, Chair Redman. Okay, it's on the floor. So Counselor Clark, you want to speak to it? And then I'll turn to Counselor Harrison, uh, fairness for for his uh, additional option.
Sure. Thanks, Chair. Um, uh, I'll start off by saying that um, I am a member of the Heritage Planning Advisory Committee for the region. I'm its chair. So we've spent a considerable amount of time discussing the bomb shelter. This isn't, this isn't new uh, for me. And we've spent a considerable amount of time talking about the Heritage Impact Assessment, which is part of the um, uh, report as Counselor Fox and uh, indicated and and is um, in the view of of our heritage staff, uh, a very comprehensive and um, excellent document. And it does uh, identify the bunker as exceeding the requirements, not just meeting, but exceeding the requirements for designation and protection. This is a heritage asset. Um, we to sort of question about what's the worst case scenario? And I think that um, we can see what the worst case scenario is because that happened five months ago in Cambridge when uh, we lost uh, the Preston Springs Hotel because of what was effectively demolition by neglect. That's why I think that some it would be very irresponsible of us to take a chance on having that happen now. I think we need to spend the money to get the building um, secure and and repaired and stabilized so that we can look uh, forward for ways to to preserve and protect it because I think that that is our responsibility. This is quite a unique um, uh, uh, heritage asset for us. There are a few others in the world, but not many. There's only one other in Ontario. And I think that one other thing I will say is that uh, according to the the report, um, although GRCA does uh, certainly put some limitations on what we can do with it, the limitations are mostly around um, changes we make to the physical structure. We we can't, we have to occupy its existing footprint with whatever we do. I I don't believe the the limitations are around use as long as we stick to its footprint. So um, that's all I'll say at this point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Harris?
Uh, thank you, uh, uh, Chair. Um, I would like to, I don't know what the process is here, but I'd like to entertain or, you know, a a new motion to to demolish, uh, pretty, pretty simple. Um, you know, City of Kitchener did not designate this a heritage site, and I think that there's been some consider considerable discussion on that. I I noted another uh, local counselor um, from the City of Kitchener chimed in to say, you know, map it, you know, put that information, you know, perhaps in our museum like Counselor Lorenz had suggested, Counselor Foxton, uh, recognize it that way. More and more people will will obviously learn about the bunker uh, by going to our own museum than than traveling down uh, to the actual bunker, which we know barely anyone in the region has even occupied in the last twenty years. Um, you know, albeit a bunch of boats for the rowing club. I mean, this is too costly of uh, an unused asset at the region to sink any more dollars into it. I mean, it's on a flood plain to be limited use. There's no parking. Uh, we're all looking for new green spaces. Perhaps there's an opportunity to provide some sort of green space, uh, resting area uh, full to use within the region, uh, but to spend one more dime than what we need to here is just is is a significant abuse, I think, of taxpayer dollars. I know the, sorry, excessive to demolish it. It's something that we will have to do uh, in order to button it up properly. Um, and again, I'm not sure the logistics of of how I can get that on the table. Uh, but I'd like to put forward that uh, a a new amendment or what have you to basically ask council to demolish it. I believe we had set aside funds within the twenty twenty-one budget to do that. It was likely a top up now in order for that to happen. Um, but we should move to get that dealt with sooner rather than later.
Okay, all right. So so I can't take it as an amendment because it's in um, contravention of the main motion. So in order for for us to proceed, for us to proceed on demolition, we have to defeat the resolution that's on the floor and and then vote, uh, then we would entertain your resolution specifically, Counselor.
It's a preemptive, I think, uh, item for council to consider, hopefully with the vote coming up. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
All right, great. Thank you. Counselor Lorenz?
Um, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and uh, I I just like to make a few comments. I don't think um, that uh, most people in this community even knew about this bunker until now. And uh, my understanding of is they built it for the bureaucrats to be able to go in there, not the politicians. So I don't know what the thinking was back during the Cold Wars, but I can tell you, I I won't support um, anything but demolishing this. Um, both of my parents fought in the Second World War. That's something that we should be uh, we should be uh, telling the youth of our community and and citizens. Those those are the kind of monuments that I think we should be looking at. This thing, um, you know, I don't think there was any good memories about about Cold War. And if there's one in Ontario, I think it's great. We could probably put that on them, on on the uh, the 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 plaque or the monument that we put in, put in 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 when this is demolished. But um, I I I see no value in this. I see, um, I think we should turn it into passive parkland and we should uh, be be able to have people read the history of it and and look at it. I mean, when I first uh, got on council, we had um, we still had an air raid siren over at Forest Hill Park. And I worked with 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 uh, uh, the the the, at that time, the Department of National Defense and some other people, and they dismantled all of those uh, sirens and disengaged. But we're still working at that time. So maybe we should be putting up um, you know, a symbol of that as well there to say that this is, we used to have like air raid sirens in in our community uh, during the Cold War. I have no problem with all of that stuff. We should be documenting, like I suggested, and putting it in our museum. So it'll be there, saved for 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 uh, all of everybody to see. But uh, no, I don't think this is a heritage building. It's just a piece of concrete that uh, was put there for uh, pretty um, pretty serious reasons. And uh, you know, if we want to, if we want to worry about world conflict, we can see it today. I mean, it's happening all over our world with uh, Russia and China. Um, I think people get that, but to have some old remnants that we're spending all this money on. Um, I I was asked the other day if uh, I've received a lot of calls and complaints about uh, you know, wh- what's happening with this. I think folks, most people don't understand. But the people that are paying the freight, that 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 the the money that we spend at the region are uh, they're more worried about putting food on the table. Hopefully they're going to keep their job or have a job when they come out of this. They want to be able to pay their mortgage. They want to be able to pay their property taxes. And nobody really cares about this kind of stuff. And basically, some of the other decisions that we made on this term. So the message that I got from the people that I talked to was stop spending my money. So I will not support this, and I hope that uh, we can um, we can turn this motion down and we can support Counselors, Counselor uh, Harris's motion, and I'd be happy to second that at that time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Kiefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll be quick. Um, I uh, I I too will not support the motion. Um, I I am in agreement with uh, with Counselor Harris and Counselor Lorenz in terms of uh, possibly erecting some sort of a uh, reminder or memory of the the building. At at one time, it it had some historical significance in in our in our region. Um, I'm not sure that uh, spending that kind of money at this point on it would uh, would be beneficial. I too have been contacted by people who uh, who are upset in terms of spending any more money here. And Counselor Clark referenced the Preston Springs. Uh, I'll I'll just remind everybody that Preston Springs was privately owned, wasn't owned publicly. Uh, that was one of the differences in in that uh, situation. But and I won't get into a a, an argument about that at this point. Um, so I I too uh, will not be supporting the motion, and I will be supporting Counselor Harris's uh, proposed motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Galloway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I won't be supporting the uh, the motion. However, I'm also not going to be supporting demolition. Uh, my, as I indicated earlier, is spending the seven hundred thousand dollars, which is the A part of the motion. Uh, I I I I support the B part of the motion only at this point in time. It does not seem to me that we need to spend the seven hundred thousand dollars to do the B part of the motion. And if it's only going to take six months or thereabouts, even longer, uh, I really don't see the need to invest money into a building for which we we are not sure what the intended use is. If after the um, the uh, the exploring of the potential reuse or adaptive reuse of the building comes up with a really brilliant idea of how the community could use this building, then I'll be more open to in investing in in the building to to uh, to achieve that particular purpose or that particular objective. But without knowing that, I just don't see the uh, the wisdom in spending the seven hundred thousand dollars. So for that reason, I can't support the recommendation as written.
So essentially, Counselor Galloway, you're saying that it's premature to spend the seven hundred thousand as indicated in A uh, before we actually have B. So if 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 you would suggest to me that you'd like to take E, A and B separately, uh, I would take it into consideration when we dealt with the motion.
Well, you know, I I'd be fine with taking A and B separately, yes.
Okay. All right.
But procedurally, that'll be up to you to determine how you do that.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Chair Redman?
Thank you, Chair Strickland. Can we just be clear? So are we taking them separately or together?
I'll take them separately.
So I guess um, I'm very supportive of keeping this bunker and not destroying it until we investigate um, what the possibilities are. And um, Counselor Clark has already talked about the Preston Springs Hotel, but we can all just cast our minds back to um, the old Kitchener City Hall. And in fact, they changed how they teach urban planning after that one was destroyed. We're not going to be able to put this back together when we demolish it. And I do believe um, several people have talked about no matter what side of this debate you're on, is that people don't know about this. And I would tell you that I do think this is a significant piece of history that should be saved at least as long enough till we can decide, does it deserve heritage designation? So I find Counselor Galloway's suggestion interesting, but I would not support demolishing it. And I would support, and I guess uh, Chair Strickland, I might go back to staff and just say, is there an interim step that is um, more cost effective in the seven hundred thousand dollars? The way I read it and what I heard with the debate was that this was necessary to deal with the mold and the further degradation of the building immediately.
Oh, ma- madam Chair, what I'm going to suggest is that we deal with this, we deal with A and B and then i- if if they're not um, passed, then we would deal with Counselor Harris's uh, subject, potential motion to demolish. And obviously, that would be subject to his, to a, you know, to a subsequent report coming back from staff. But I would also suggest to help us to get through this, that for for B, further to your question, uh, that we would ask staff to bring back the report like within three months or within a short period of time, because we don't want to see the the uh, the facility uh, be degraded to the point where we lose it a- as you suggest. So so if if I could say that the question to staff that I would have, further to your comment, uh, uh, Chair Redman, is how soon could we get a report back from staff on potential future use? Helen?
Um, I suppose we can do it as, do our best to do it as quickly as you need it to be, right? So are you saying that you would like to see something in three months? Is that what you said?
Or less?
Three months or less?
Yes, three months or less. Yep. You can do that?
I'm going to say yes, and then I'm going to have to. So yes.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. So I I'm not sure everyone else is feeling here, but I think we're 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 moving towards a uh, a compromise. Counselor Mann?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and through you. I I like the recommendation that Mr. That uh, Counselor Galloway brought forward about dealing with A and B separately. I would like to know if there's any potential use for this building before we would go down a demolition route. And um, I just like, I'm glad to see that staff will be able to come back with something uh, in the near future as to any potential use for the building. Because if there is, then let's let's entertain that. But if there's not, then we have a decision to make. So I would, I like the idea of dealing with uh, A and B separately. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. I see no further questions. So so we're ready, ready to deal with the question then. So
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have called for a recorded vote on all of these votes, please.
Sure, um, uh, Tim, the clerk's got that. Okay, well, before we do that, I I guess I'd like to make a couple of comments. And that is, I I support uh, spending the seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I support finding a a long-term adaptive reuse for the facility. You've heard my comments on this before. You know, I'm not old enough to have to live through the duck and cover drills that were in schools. We had to go underneath your desk and and, you know, be very anxious uh, growing up about the potential for nuclear war. And most people seem to put that in their rearview mirror and think, well, this is, you know, yesterday's problem, but it's not. Uh, just recently, in the last eighteen months, uh, with President Trump and North Korea and tests of of nuclear arms and and rockets being uh, tested uh, over the ocean from North Korea. Uh, just this past couple of weeks, Russia and the USA have have uh, have are working through decreasing their nuclear arsenal monitoring system. This is an important issue that impacts humanity, and we need to be hyper vigilant. We we have the capacity for mutually assured destruction. And my vision for this facility is an interpretive reuse, educate people, educate young people, put this issue on the radar so that people understand what risk we still have uh, as a human race. It's critically important. And and for us to spend the money on this asset, I think it's got a a very relevant historical importance. But I also think it's critically important to educate uh, our community and our citizens around the risk of nuclear mutually assured destruction. It is a real risk. We don't talk about it anymore, but it is a real risk. So those are my comments on that. Um, and so I we'll move to A and B. Uh, Counselor Clark?
Uh, thanks, uh, Chair Strickland. I I think that we are talking about a revised B, um, given that B currently says, uh, direct staff to bring this back as part of the twenty twenty-two budget. But I think what we've now said is we want it back in three months. Um, I'd like to, I'd like to actually see the new wording for B. We've run into problems in the recent past because we haven't been that clear on what we were voting on.
Okay. So I would say for B, direct staff to further explore potential uses of the site, associated design options and funding sources for consideration and bring back to council for consideration within ninety days or less.
Yeah, that 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 language would be important for me to know how, because I would be prepared to uh, um, vote against A if B includes that language.
Chair, excuse me, Chair Strickland. Um, the clerk can put up the revised wording if that's helpful in the chamber.
Good with that, Counselor Clark? Okay, so that's great. So maybe we take that down now because I'd like to see the full screen. And we'll got to do a recorded vote here. Uh, so we'll deal with the resolution. We'll deal, we'll part A first, which is proceed with immediate repair work to waterproof the base, secure and stabilize the building to avoid further deterioration of the building. This is a recorded vote. So, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Chair Strickland. Uh, we'll start with, uh, Chair Redmond.
In favor.
Counselor Armstrong?
Opposed.
Counselor Clark?
In favor.
Counselor Erb?
In favor.
Counselor Foxton?
Opposed.
Counselor Galloway?
Opposed.
Sorry, that was opposed?
Opposed, yes.
Okay, Counselor Harris?
Opposed.
Counselor Jaworski? I believe he is not here. I'll call again. Counselor Jaworski? Is absent. Counselor Jowitt?
Opposed.
Counselor Kiefer?
Opposed.
Counselor Lorenz?
Opposed.
Counselor Mann?
Opposed.
Counselor Nowak?
In favor.
Counselor Shance?
Opposed.
Counselor Strickland?
In favor.
Counselor Verbanovich? I'll call again. Counselor Ver- Verbanovich? Okay, we'll mark him as absent. Uh, so that is, uh, defeated. Um, nine opposed and five in favor. Uh, so Chair Strickland, if you're ready, we'll move to B?
We'll move to B. Okay. Everyone clear on what we're voting on here? Staff to report back within 90 days or less. Okay? Thank you.
Beginning with Chair Redmond?
In favor.
Counselor Armstrong?
In favor.
Counselor Clark?
In favor.
Counselor Erb?
In favor.
Counselor Foxton?
In favor.
Counselor Galloway?
In favor.
Counselor Harris?
Opposed.
Uh, Counselor Jaworski has not rejoined us. Counselor Jowitt?
In favor.
Counselor Kiefer?
Opposed.
Counselor Lorenz?
Opposed.
Counselor Mann?
In favor.
Counselor Nowak?
In favor.
Counselor Shance?
In favor.
Counselor Strickland?
In favor.
And Counselor Verbanovich? Is absent. Uh, that is carried, um, with 11 in favor, three opposed.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Thank you very much, uh, council. Uh, good, good discussion. And we'll be revisiting this debate within 90 days or less when staff comes back with a, with a subsequent report. So thank you very much. Um, at this point, go ahead.
Got a clarification. This is coming to council yet again, right?
Well, I would, yeah. This is committee of the whole. You're absolutely right. So this would come back.
Discussing this again. And there's an opportunity for us to change positions if we want, correct?
There is. So you, you want to support B when it comes to council, Counselor Lorenz?
Well, but I'd like to talk to you about it. Thank you.
Okay, great. So that is right. This has to come to council next week for formal adoption. Yeah, thank you for that. Okay, so, uh, a- at this point, I'll turn it over to, to Chair Redmond because I have to ex- stop for, for personal reason for, for a couple hours. And I don't know, Chair Redmond, uh, if you want to carry on, there's one more report, um, uh, from staff, but I'll leave it in your hands. Okay, see everyone later. Thank you very much. Good meeting this morning.
Thank you, Chair Strickland. So our next report? Sorry, I was writing all over my script here. It's, it's Grace Birmingham and Justin Sparling. Okay, so Justine, sorry. Uh, Emergency Shelter and Harm Reduction Integration, um, Initiative. And there's a staff presentation. So Justine and Grace, welcome. You have the floor.
Thank you and good morning, Chair Redmond and members of regional council. Um, I'm just going to provide some introductory remarks before I invite Justine Sparling to speak, uh, to the presentation. Um, this morning we'll hear an update to the report presented to the Board of Health on March 3rd, 2021, that described a study we were initiating to examine the harm reduction needs across the region's emergency shelter sector in response to the impact of substance use and overdose on shelter participants and providers. So before I invite Justine, who is one of the leads on the study, along with Kennedy Schmals, who unfortunately is not able to be with us today, um, to provide an overview on the approach and study findings, I'll draw your attention to a few key points related to this project. Firstly, the study took a sector-wide approach to ensure we are taking stock of approaches being used shelter to shelter in the region to respond to substance use and overdose. Second, the study findings were shared with shelter providers who validated the summary you are about to hear and the next steps. And thirdly, through this work, it was clear that shelter providers and direct service staff are doing incredible work to respond to very difficult situations that are stressful and often extremely traumatic. We will share with you a high-level overview of the findings. However, they represent significant dedication and compassion from shelter staff, and we are thankful for their ongoing work in supporting people who access emergency shelter. So with that, I'll invite Justine to provide a presentation on the findings.
Welcome, Justine.
Good morning, Chair Redmond and members of committee of the whole. I'm gonna share my screen, so give me one moment to get that out for you guys. Okay, can everybody see the presentation on my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I am pleased to be presenting to you this morning on the Emergency Shelter and Harm Reduction Integrated, um, Integration Initiative, um, also known as ESHRI. So I'll start off the presentation today with a reminder of why this project was actioned, our research approach, the preliminary findings, the proposed actions, and the next steps for this project. So the ESHRI study was conducted because of growing concerns regarding overdoses and emergency shelters and the impact on participants, staff, and staff retention. Locally, issues related to overdoses and substance use in shelters were intersecting with conversations related to pandemic response. The movement of shelters had changed harm reduction supports available in the community, also resulting in some access issues. Other communities in the province were facing similar challenges and had also taken action on addressing issues related to substance use and overdose in emergency shelter settings. As such, we set out to learn more and the extent of the challenges being experienced in Waterloo region using a sector-wide approach to answer the following questions. So first, what is the prevalence of fatal and non-fatal overdoses in emergency shelters? Second, what existing harm reduction supports are available within emergency shelter settings? Third, what are the challenges experienced by shelter providers and participants pertaining to substance use? And fourth, how can we enhance harm reduction supports to address these challenges? So public health staff took a mixed methods and comprehensive research approach. Staff spoke to all emergency shelters across the system, which is important because each shelter is unique, operates according to different guidelines, and importantly, have different levels of risk acceptability when it comes to substance use and harm reduction interventions. Staff spoke with leadership and direct service staff and asked questions about the challenges they face and challenges they see facing shelter participants. Also, the study research ethics approval, which is important because there's extensive trauma felt among shelter staff, either vicariously or as a result of directly witnessing a death or an overdose. So the findings of the ESHRI project demonstrated that emergency shelters in the Waterloo region are working hard to prevent overdoses and keep participants safe. The preliminary findings also demonstrated the following. So first, overdoses are frequent occurrences in shelters, with shelter staff estimating that two to four overdoses occur per, occur per week in each individual emergency shelter, which is likely underreported and underestimated as many overdoses are not reported to staff or to emergency services. Emergency shelter staff reported feeling responsible for monitoring participants after they appeared to have used substances to prevent injury and death due to risk of overdose. Staff are also feeling overwhelmed and unprepared for the level of need in shelters and experience high levels of stress, coupled with the complexity of emotions. Staff also feel unable to work on housing goals with participants due to imminent concerns related to substance use. And emergency shelter staff experienced challenges concurrently supporting participants who do not use substances and those who do. There is also minimal access to grief and trauma supports for both staff and participants across the emergency shelter system. We also noticed that access to harm reduction supports for participants in shelters are inconsistent. Inconsistency in harm reduction approaches shelter to shelter leads to confusion for staff and participants alike. And lastly, although supervised consumption was out of scope for the project, it was mentioned frequently by both leadership and direct service staff as one part of a number of solutions that could support emergency shelter participants who use substances. A number of emergency shelter staff indicated that ease of access to safe consumption would be one method of preventing overdoses in emergency shelters. Based on the findings, the following actions could be implemented within existing resources to support emergency shelter providers and participants. So first, shelter-led onboarding to the needle syringe program and the naloxone program. This will ensure that staff and participants have access to necessary harm reduction supplies when they need them. Second, develop a best practice guide for harm reduction in emergency shelters led by public health staff and the appropriate emergency shelter working groups to support decision-making within shelters and support training needs of staff. Third, develop a risk framework to identify a range of strategies for overdose prevention within shelters. This would support shelters to make informed decision-making about their approach and would make onsite practices and policies clearer for both staff and participants. Develop a plan to improve access to consumption and treatment services at 152 for shelter participants to support improved access to consumption services for people with barriers such as women and youth. So to move forward, the following potential actions will require financial support. A proposal has been submitted to secure funding through the region of Waterloo's Equity Investment Fund. This fund aims to improve the economic, social, and cultural health and wellness of Indigenous, Black, racialized, and marginalized communities, such as individuals experiencing homelessness. Should funding not be available through this envelope, exploring other options will be needed. Temporary two-year funding, such as the Equity Investment Fund, would help address the immediate needs of shelters and would undergo an evaluation at the end of the period to consider the need for continued support. So the first recommendation is temporary onsite harm reduction workers within emergency shelters to provide harm reduction education and support to participants. This would ensure sector-wide harm reduction and substance use support for emergency shelter participants. Additional onsite supports would also allow emergency shelter staff to better support participants to obtain housing, resulting in shorter shelter stays. Embedded grief and trauma supports to support parents and staff to recover from experiences of trauma in emergency shelters. Both of these actions would have public health and community services act as the administrative lead, shelters acting as the operational leads. And next, development of a harm reduction training program that can be used across the sector and is accessible to all staff through online modules to support the training needs of staff across the emergency shelter system. So two more actions that require additional resources. First, improve data collection related to priority populations who access shelters through existing databases used by emergency shelter providers to support evidence-based approaches to harm reduction programs in shelters and to improve supports for priority populations. And lastly, the development of a communication strategy to promote community education and to support the reduction of stigma experienced by shelter participants who use substances. And of course, the ESHRI project also revealed systemic issues resulting in proposed actions that are beyond the scope of public health and community services. So today, we are recommending that the regional municipality of Waterloo endorse a letter of advocacy to both the federal and provincial government recommending enhanced funding for timely substance use treatment, community integrative mental health supports, and harm reduction supports across the housing stability system, to be signed by Chair Karen Redmond on behalf of regional council, and if willing, the Waterloo Region Integrated Drug Strategy and the Ontario Health Teams. So in terms of next steps, public health and community services staff will share detailed findings with community partners and emergency shelter providers who participated in the research. As the emergency shelters are independent and autonomous organizations, any and all actions taken to respond to the research findings will be at the discretion of each organization. Next, public health and community services staff will support emergency shelters to move forward on the proposed actions within existing resources. And lastly, public health and community services staff will prepare a letter of advocacy to both the federal and provincial government on behalf of and in conjunction with the Waterloo Region Integrated Drug Strategy, the Ontario Health Teams, and regional council. That concludes the update on the ESHRI project. Thank you, and we will now take questions.
Thank you very much, Justine. That was, um, a really focused, um, and, uh, informative presentation. And Grace, thanks for introducing it. Uh, Counselor Galloway?
Thank you, Chair, and thanks, uh, Justine and Grace for the, uh, the presentation. Uh, a pretty important project. Um, the one question I had was, um, the barriers that women and youth are having accessing the CTS, is, is that a matter of accessing the CTS or is that, are those barriers within the shelter system? Um, can you just clarify what those barriers are?
So I saw both Justine and Grace unmute. Who wants to go first?
Justine, why don't you go first, and then I can chime in if, if needed?
Thanks, Grace. So, um, thank you, Counselor Galloway, for that question. Um, so in terms of women and youth, what we heard when we were conducting the interviews and in the survey responses, um, was that because the CTS tends to be, um, a more male-dominated space, um, it isn't perceived as the most ideal space for both women and youth to access. Um, so what we did propose was the opportunity to do more reach search, uh, research outreach and more education with those populations so that they do feel safe accessing those spaces. Because what we heard was even though, um, many of the services for youth and women are in close proximity to the CTS, they're still not seeing those populations access those spaces and probably for a, a multitude of reasons.
Grace, did you?
So our stats at the CTS, um, uh, women and youth are underrepresented in terms of the clientele at, um, the CTS vis a vis, uh, you know, the, 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 the usage demographics?
So Grace, do you want to take a turn?
Yeah, um, thank you for your question, Counselor Galloway. Um, what, what we've learned, um, from other sites in other areas is that they've had to do some, um, targeted outreach to different, uh, populations in order to, um, have the space, a CTS feel, uh, like it's theirs, like it's theirs to use, that it's coming for them and that it's, uh, it can meet their unique needs. Um, so for example, South Riverdale, um, they dedicate, uh, one afternoon, uh, So for example, South Riverdale, they dedicate one afternoon per week for just women so that women can go safe in that space. Often, youth, women who are using substances, they tend to experience multiple marginalization and therefore experience just greater barriers to accessing some services. So what we're proposing is that we need to work with the Sanguine Health Center, who operate the CTS, and think intentionally about how we ensure that that space can feel accessible for both women and youth and perhaps other populations as well.
Okay. Well, thanks very much, Grace and Justine, for the answer. And I'm sure, in regards to the recommendation, I support the recommendation, be happy to move it when appropriate. But I think we should add to it that it should be circulated to all area MPPs and MPs.
Sorry, Counselor Galloway, you faded out at the end. You're prepared to move it, and I'll take you as a mover, but what were you adding at the end?
To add, circulated to all area MPs and MPPs.
I would see that as very doable. Counselor Clark, I have you up next. Would you like to second this recommendation? Okay, and go ahead, Counselor Clark.
Thanks. Yeah, happy to second it. And I have my my comments rather than questions. First of all, to Counselor Galloway's question, I just want to say that this issue about women and youth not accessing the CTS, this isn't an issue that's restricted to CTS. It's restricted to sort of all services. We don't see women attending the drop-in programs or the meal programs or any of these other programs that are that are male-dominated because they just don't feel like safe spaces. So certainly true of the CTS, but not true only of the CTS. It's something we need to look at across the board. But I did want to say to staff, I think that staff of the shelters particularly really appreciated this research because they really appreciated being asked the question and being given opportunities to talk about their experiences. And one of the things that I've heard from staff is that we underestimate how traumatic it is to witness overdoses. Even, we tend to think, oh, well, it was successfully reversed, nothing happened, so it's fine. But it's, you know, when we have staff that are witnessing these, you know, every day, every second day, it's taking a huge toll on their mental health, and we really are dealing with some severe stress issues around this. So I appreciate the changes that you see coming, but I think just being asked the question was really.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Jawett.
Thanks, Chair Redman, and thanks for the report. Grace and Justine, as always, I'm sure we're all very, very warned to know that we're going to start doing some of this support work for staff because I do believe that especially during COVID with such isolation, the stress and the trauma that they've experienced has probably increased significantly. And so I am definitely in favor of the advocacy letter for sure and hoping that, you know, if we can start to get some other levels of government support here. Are we starting to turn our minds to some of the upstream information over the years so that we can get more to a preventative place? Like, so I see this as upstream for staff. I see us investing this mental support, mental health support, and the trauma counseling in staff, which is very, very significant. But I also see that if we could start to normalize trauma counseling upstream and start, because, you know, I sent a link to Bruce, I can't remember the gentleman, but everybody knows him as the trauma guru, and you can picture him. I'll find the link and send it over to you, Grace and Justine. But I believe that trauma is at the heart of most of the challenges that we're suffering when it comes to the addiction crisis. And so are we starting to turn our minds to how we can embrace more trauma counseling and find ways of getting even our staff more adapted using trauma counseling and trauma healing practices here? Is there a way we can do that? I know that the courses are $2,000 to $3,000, but I think that we could do some work with Train the Trainer and really invest in giving the tools because those that those that use those tools, even if they need them, actually heal better for using them. So I'm thinking that a holistic approach like this, we could maybe actually, you know, do more good infiltrating the trauma that's specific community. And I'm sorry, I don't actually like to be so wordy, but do you know what I'm trying to express here?
Great grace appears to.
Yeah, I appreciate your commenting. I will mention that Chris McAvoy, who is the manager of Housing and Community Services, is also at the meeting and can maybe comment on a little bit about this. But before that, I'll just mention a couple of things. You're absolutely right. Trauma and grief is, again, being layered on to a population who've already typically experienced a lot of trauma and a lot of grief in their lives. So this current opioid crisis that we're dealing with is just adding on extra emotional strain unto folks who frankly have already a very high level of that. I'll invite Chris to speak to the importance of providing supports within shelters so that we can, staff can really focus their attention on the important work of getting folks out of emergency shelter and into long-term housing. So Chris, I'll let you speak to that.
Thanks, Grace. Through you, Chair Redman. We hear consistently from emergency shelter providers how important training is for a number of different aspects, whether it be housing-focused shelter, trauma and grief, harm reduction, a whole spectrum and continuum. And we did have a fairly robust training plan that we were planning to deliver in winter of last year in direct service, and then the pandemic hit, so we're getting back to that. And trauma and grief counseling are just one of the many kind of coordinated training responses that we want to be able to offer shelter providers and support shelter providers in training their direct service staff. And we're constantly talking with the emergency shelter system about what we need to put in place, either as regional government or as a housing stability system, to ensure that staff are spending that time supporting housing plans. Because that is, as a housing-first community, we know that housing is the answer and solution to homelessness, and that's the work that staff want to get to and that the trauma, the grief, the response to overdose is a challenge in getting to that housing-focused work. So yeah, to your point, Grace, absolutely, we want to support providers and the housing stability system. Do whatever we can to support staff to be able to get to that housing-focused work.
Counselor Jawett, do you have any further comments or questions?
Well, just a little bit of a nuance there. Yes, I recognize and I appreciate the work that everyone's doing here. I know that we've spent five years around this table talking about these issues, and I know that if they were fixable, they would have been fixed. Don't get me wrong. I am not being critical here. I just think it's heartbreaking that it's taking us so long. And I know we're not alone, so I apologize if it sounds heavy. But I do believe that this notion of trauma and grief counseling that you refer to needs to be widespread. I believe that we need to take it upstream and around the stream and in the stream and all about the stream. Like, I really feel like that's the nugget that we have been missing. The trauma and grief counseling is preventative tool as well as a reactive tool. And so, and I'm not trying to lecture here because it's not my world, it's your world. You guys know more than I do. I've just been reading on it for six years since I got elected, and I'm saying, wow, like, why can't we, why can't we really engage in the trauma and grief part of this in a very, very macro and micro way, I guess, is what I'm hoping that that's what we can advocate a little bit more so, is clearly define the mental health part of this that we think could be the intervention. I guess that's where I'm looking at this, and I'm hoping that's what you guys are seeing, and I'm hoping that that's what we're asking for.
Thank you, Counselor Jawett. I'm assuming that's more of a statement than a question, so did you want staff to respond?
I really did, yeah. It's not a statement. I don't have the answers. I look to their expertise. They're running these studies, they're asking these questions of the participants, and and I want to know, you know, are we capable of bringing the appropriate level of trauma and grief counseling to be able to intervene and make this situation improved on some level?
Grace?
Yeah, so I appreciate, again, once again, Counselor Jawett, appreciate your comments and your observations here. The grief and trauma counseling that we are, or supports that we're looking to to put into shelters is about dealing with the overdoses and the substance use that's happening for staff currently and for participants currently because that's so, it's so immediate, so imminent, that that emergency is right there in front of folks. But I think to your point, what we're asking for, and the third part of our the recommendation that we have tabled, and part of that recommendation is to talk about the need for timely mental health supports for folks in the community. Because we know that, you know, to your point, much of, many of the folks that we work with through, you know, who are struggling with substance use, struggling with homelessness, many of those folks have significant trauma that has occurred to them in their lives and require mental health supports in order to overcome some of those or at the very least be able to deal with those on a day-to-day basis. So you're absolutely correct. I think we need to, which is why we have put forward the recommendation, we need to look at the immediate needs in terms of the trauma and grief that's happening right now in shelters, and we also need to look at the overall system of mental health supports.
Chris, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, thank you. The only other piece that I would add to Grace's response is that what I don't want to have takeaway from this conversation is that grief and trauma supports are not currently available within the shelter system. They absolutely are. We're looking for ways to enhance those supports, so some organizations and providers may have an EAP or employee and assistance program for both staff and participants. Different organizations would have chaplain supports that they would bring in in the immediate aftermath of a non-fatal or fatal overdose. So supports are provided, and we know they're not currently enough. So we're looking to enhancements, and to your questions and comments, Counselor Jawett, that are appreciated around the upstream and the prevention pieces, we are exploring what does it mean to be an emergency shelter housing stability staff member, what are the required trainings? And so grief, trauma, overdose prevention, overdose response will be part of those conversations as a baseline training for any staff member coming into emergency shelters, knowing that that is some of the work that they will be involved in. So just wanted to highlight that it will be enhancements, not things that aren't already top of mind for shelter providers in the region.
Thank you, Counselor Jawett.
I'm encouraged, Chris. I appreciate that as well, Grace and Justine. Just to keep into your mind that once you start down this road of drawing the attention to it, the opportunity is before us, and I hope that we just don't lose that opportunity to to recognize that the upstream part of this, you know, if we'd considered it even eight years ago, we would be having different conversations today, I think. That's all. Thank you very much. I appreciate the hard work that you guys do.
Thank you, Counselor Jawett. Counselor Urb, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Redman, and thanks, Justine and Grace, and all of your colleagues for the work that you're doing in the shelter system and the CTS sites. And I think what you've been doing, it's so important for those that are in the CTS sites and in the shelter systems that it's a continuing recognition that this whole work needs to be elevated as an integral part of the full healthcare system where everybody is getting the same kind of supports that we would be giving in long-term care and hospitals. And maybe it's not meeting all of our expectations, but that we see this work as part of the true healthcare system and equate it with that so that we can provide the supports that we need to. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Urb. I see no more questions or comments. So I think Justine already posted the recommendation. It has been moved and seconded. I see no further speakers, so please use your yes and no icons to vote on this recommendation. That is carried, colleagues. Thank you. Thank you, Justine and Grace and Chris and Shuli, who was there to answer any questions that nobody else could answer, so thank you for that. The next agenda item is 5.5 Amendment to the Regional Municipality of Waterloo Controlled Access Bylaw Number 58-87 for access to Regional Road Number 70, which is Ira Needles Boulevard in the city of Waterloo. I don't think there's a staff presentation to this. So I'd be looking for a mover and a seconder. This is that moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Mann. Thank you. That we approve the amendment through the Controlled Access Bylaw for temporary construction to the access on the west side of Regional Road 70, which is Ira Needles Boulevard, approximately 70 meters north of the existing paved access to 41 Ira Needles and 305 meters southwest of Regional Road Number 9, which is Urb Street West, and Regional Road Number 70, which is Ira Needles Boulevard. And this, okay, I see no comments or questions, so please use your icons to vote yes and no. That is carried, colleagues. So the next agenda item is 5.6 Amendment to the Regional Municipality Controlled Access Bylaw 58-87 for two accesses to Regional Road Number 24, which is Hesper Road in the city of Cambridge. Counselor Clark, do you have a question, or are you? Okay, go ahead.
Just a question. I wasn't clear whether both of these accesses are permanent. In the other amendments, the construction accesses were temporary, but this doesn't say temporary. So are both permanent?
I would assume for construction they are, but Ms. Sergi is going to tell us. Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you, Chair Redman. So the access points for this property are both permanent. There are no other access points for this property.
Thank you.
So I would entertain a mover and a seconder for moved by Counselor Kiefer, seconded by Counselor Mann. See no questions, so please use your icons to vote. That is carried. Thank you. 5.7 Amendment to the Regional Controlled Access Bylaw 58-87. Maybe we could have taken these all together. And this is Fisher-Holman in the city of Kitchener. So I would entertain a mover and a seconder, moved by Counselor Harris, seconded by Counselor Galloway. And this is a temporary construction access on the west side of Regional Road 58, which is Fisher-Holman at the future Forest Walk Street. All those in favor, please vote with your yes and no icons, or you can vote. I guess if you're voting in favor, it's a check mark. That is carried, colleagues. Next is Charles Street East Road Allowance Dedication between Cedar Street South and Madison Avenue South in Kitchener. So I need a mover and a seconder, moved by Counselor Lorenz, seconded by Counselor Schatz. So this recommendation is to form part of Regional Road 96, Charles Street East in the city of Kitchener as described in the report, and further that the regional solicitor be directed to register notice of such bylaw and title to the lands that are subject of the bylaw as outlined in the attached report. All those in favor, please vote so, and use your X if you're voting against. That is carried. Colleagues, 5.9 Application for the Green Municipal Funding Implementation on the MyoVision Advanced Transportation Management System. This is moved by Counselor Jawett, seconded by Counselor Armstrong. And this is directing, authorizing the Commissioner of Corporate Services Chief Financial Officer to enter into an agreement for funding from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities as part of the Green Municipal Fund for Greenhouse Gas Reduction for Advanced Transportation Management. Management System. All those in favor or against, please indicate. That is carried. Thank you, colleagues. Next is Information and Correspondence, Counselor Inquiries and Requests for Information Tracking List. Are there any comments or additions to that? Seeing none, Transportation and Environmental Services Annual Report. This is being received for information, and Mr. Schmidt has lit up his square. So Mr. Schmidt, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank Council for all the support last year for Transportation and Environmental Services and the work that we do. Last year was obviously a very different and difficult year. The report that we have summarizes not only the great work that the department has done, that we would do in any typical year, but also the work that we did in dealing with the pandemic and the problems and challenges we had from that. So again, thank you to Council for their support, and thank all the staff in TES. They do great work day-to-day. Without the foundational work that they do every day, the water supply, the transportation work, the garbage collection, all the things that we take for granted, we wouldn't be able to do some of the other great things that the region does do. So I'll end with that. Thank you very much. And I hope you get a chance to read the document. I think it is quite good, quite readable, and really does highlight the awesome work that we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schmidt. And please extend our thanks to the professionalism of all of your staff and everyone that puts both Transportation and Environmental Services at the front, because it truly is something that engages our community and does absolutely is reflected in the strategic priorities of this council. I think Counselor Clark is applauding, right? No, you want? Yes, okay, she's applauding. So that was an applaud, but the rest of us are doing it virtually. Other business? Counselor Harris, please go ahead.
Thank you. And I suppose I could have also mentioned this at the council inquiries. I did want to ask staff if they are involved, and I know we've all been reading about the relocation of the folks down in South Kitchener to Woolwich Township. And I know Woolwich Township is dealing with this matter as well, but I'm wondering if staff at the region can update council, whether that be now or at a future council meeting, on their involvement in this, you know, relocation to provide services and supports to these folks. I don't know what, if any, involvement the region has with regards to, you know, land use approvals. I believe that that's Woolwich's responsibility, but I have had a lot of inquiries about, you know, this relocation of these folks who need obviously significant supports. Speaking from, you know, a Kitchener counselor, you know, I live in and around the location where they are now. I know that, you know, as far as I'm aware, the community is very supportive, the existing community that is very supportive of helping those folks. And I'm concerned, as a Kitchener counselor, of their move up to the township with the lack of resources, perhaps, that they may need, and the infrastructure, frankly, that they may need. And I'm wondering, you know, if staff at the regional level, because they're obviously heavily impacted on homelessness and all those other supports, can update council on their involvement in this matter, whether that be now or save it for council meeting next week. I do think it's important to get our staff's input on this whole matter.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. I think Mr. Lochner is prepared to comment right now, and we can certainly bring additional information back.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. And thanks for the question, Counselor Harris. We will bring information back next week. We've been involved at a variety of levels. Our community supports team has been engaging with the proponents on options for land. We've looked at various locations within the region, and area municipalities have been involved. Chair Redmond, Counselor Schontz, acting as mayor, Mayor Schontz, and David Brennaman, the CAO of Wilmot and I, or sorry, Woolwich and I met earlier this week with Father Toby and Jeff Wilmer to discuss the potential move out to a location in Woolwich. Our planning staff have been involved in terms of the process that would need to be followed to address the planning requirements of such a move. And perhaps Commissioner Bostolomus Saunders, or I think Chris was on earlier, may be able to comment further on some of the detailed discussions with that group.
So just for clarity of people watching this live streamed, it's usually known as Lot 42 and/or A Better Tent City, and that is the development, Counselor Harris, to which you refer, and that Mr. Lochner referred, and we can bring a report back for council next week. Is that acceptable? That's what you're asking for?
Yep. If staff are already on that matter and have an intention of updating council next week on A Better Tent City from a regional perspective, I think that would be satisfactory, knowing that I think that the move is not slated until at least the end of the month.
Okay, that can certainly be done. Thank you for that. I'm now going to entertain a motion to go into closed. I need a mover and a seconder to go into closed session. Moved by Counselor Kiefer, seconded by Counselor Lorenz. All those in favor? Any opposed? So colleagues, I also need a motion to adjourn, but it doesn't mean you can go anywhere, because we still have to be in camera. So that is moved by Counselor Mann, seconded by Counselor Jawett. All those in favor? Any opposed? So that is carried. So colleagues, we will give you a 10-minute break, all right?